It is now. Okay.
From the top.
All right, from the top. Okay, welcome to the Monday, December 11th, Lower Makefield Township Planning Commission Meeting. We have four of the five planning commissioners, I guess. Here TJ Gill may arrive later tonight, depending on his personal commitment that he previous commitment had. So tonight we have on the agenda, I guess, the first item is. What is the first item, I guess, is the minutes or last meeting. Did anyone have any comments or questions, I guess?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any second? All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, um, I guess the third item is the final plan approval of for 1511 Lindenhurst Minor Subdivision. So I guess we'll turn it over to you guys.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay, so my name's Erica Miller. I'm an attorney at Obermeyer. I'm filling in on my, on behalf of my colleague Kelly McGowan. I think you guys might be familiar with her. I'm here tonight with Heath Dumac. He's an engineer at Dumac Engineering. And like you mentioned, we are here for 1511 Lindenhurst Road. This is a pretty simple subdivision. We are taking a larger, almost six acre lot and subdividing it into two and then building a one residential dwelling on the new lot. Um, we already have gone through zoning approvals and have been granted the following variances from section two, 251B4D to permit a disturbance of 12% of wetland buffer where 100% is protection is required. Um, from 251B5C3 to permit a disturbance of 10.3% of class three steep slope where 100% is required and to permit a minimum building setback to be measured from the lot lines instead of the special setback requirements. Um, and then those were conditioned upon with replanting 50% foot or 50 foot buffer to comply with the SADO, no use as Airbnb and the removal of a rear shed. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Heath to kind of explain just the general project and then we can talk about the notes from the engineers and the other.
Can I just interrupt? The deed restriction not only was to replant the buffer, but was to prevent any further encroachment in the wetland buffer, further encroachment into steep slopes and no use of either lot as an Airbnb. So there were three different um, conditions of approval.
Correct. Um, introductions for those who may not know me. My name is Heath Dumac, uh, Dumac Engineering. Uh, honestly, I grew up here in Lower Makefield, um, many, many moons ago. Um, what we're talking about this evening is the parcel at 1511 Lindenhurst. It is an irregularly irregularly shaped lot with approximately 1,100 plus feet uh, of frontage on Lindenhurst Road and just looking, uh, as you can see, uh, it has an extraordinarily substantial uh, frontage. Um, the parcel is almost, uh, is bisected by an existing drainage feature or stream. Cutting the parcel in two and also crossing Lindenhurst Road, uh, going east towards the Delaware River. Uh, there is an existing house on the northern, oops, on the northern piece. Um, the intent is to subdivide the lot, uh, one lot into two. So we are proposing one new single family home. It would be south of the existing house. And the intent is to share, use the existing driveway as a shared driveway between the two homes. Um, stormwater, as, as you were, uh, told, uh, previously, the zoning variances were uh, applied for and granted back in February. We are here tonight looking for, uh, final approval. Uh, thank you, Mr. Majewski, um, for the piece. We have, um, stormwater management controls in place for both lots. Um, an infiltration bed along the southern side of, uh, the new parcel. And then for the existing home, we have a ballast pit um, in that, uh, I'll call it east of the existing house. Uh, infiltration tests were done, uh, and the stormwater controls were designed accordingly. We have a six-page letter from your township engineer. And unless you have specific questions based on the narrative that I just described, um, I would suggest we can go line item by line item through the review letter. Um, to make sure that we're going to do exactly what we say we're going to do. Anyone have any questions or?
Just so that little piece over all the way on the left.
Yep.
Almost lopped off from the property.
That is.
That's just part of the new lot on the left.
We are, yes, we, in, in order to make the acreages all work, we are utilizing that as part of the lot to acreage. Yes.
And, and the reason for that odd configuration of the lot, Lindenhurst Road at one time came up through that area and then took a sharp bend and came back down and took another bend. And so that's how they arrived at this oddball configuration.
I'm going to say, uh, I had no idea on that part, so you definitely predate me. Um, if no one has any other questions, uh, would be page two. Uh, my apologies, it's a six-page letter. Uh, page one is, uh, basically introductory. Uh, page two, getting into the comments. Uh, items, uh, one through four are all will comply.
And Mr. Dumac, just so we're clear, you're looking at a letter dated November 10th, 2023 from Ren Mington Vernick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I believe the author of said report, uh, was Mr. Isaac Kessler, uh, PE. So, uh, moving forward, page three, uh, everything on page three is a will comply. Uh, looking at page four, uh, items 18, 19, 21, and 22 are will complies. Um, item 20 has to do with a waiver that we are requesting. Um, and I think that will probably be one of the more talkative topics for tonight's meeting, which is sidewalks. Um, we can discuss that or wait until we get to the waivers themselves, which actually are on the next page. So would you like to talk sidewalks, gentlemen and lady?
I'd love to talk sidewalks.
I, I mean, yeah, the sidewalk come up a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Type of projects. And I would just like. Yeah, let, let's hear from you first before I.
Certainly. Um, we have approximately 1,150 feet of sidewalk or my apologies, 1,150 feet of frontage along Lindenhurst Road. Yeah, going, going to the aerial, uh, the side street here, there is a small stub sidewalk. Uh, and I believe, yep, you're terminating it right about where it should be. And then coming from the other direction, it's not on this aerial, unfortunately, but there, there's a bike trail on the east side of Lindenhurst and likewise it terminates before the frontage of this property. Um, as Jim, you may know more about the history of Lindenhurst, but it sort of seems to us that the stream and the culvert that bisect, uh, our property and also cut across Lindenhurst seems to be the restrictive factor in all of this. There's not a lot of space between the edge of the shoulder, the guard rail, it is a PennDOT road, and the actual end of the culvert. Um, I've been out to the site several times. The most recent was last Friday and then again on Sunday to look specifically at that culvert and how is it feasible to put sidewalk in? And long and short of it, it is feasible up to that culvert on either side. Now, I'm up for suggestions. Um, my client is to some extent willing to put some sidewalk in. Um, however, when dealing with that culvert, when dealing with the guardrails and PennDOT, it becomes a very sticky situation. And because of that, we'd like some direction or, uh, some relief. Um, I'm not quite sure how you guys would like to proceed, but, uh, we wanted to discuss it with you guys, uh, as part of this decision.
First, first question I ask, is there any sort of precedent thing we can look at on this? Is this pretty unique?
Uh, well, this is a lot of frontage for.
Yeah, but what about the frontage? I mean, like, I'm, I'm just like, just focus right now on the culvert being a roadblock on this.
Um, if you'd like, the record plan does show the guard rail and all that positioning. We could zoom into that image.
Um, well, first of all, the bike path, uh, continues on the east side of Lindenhurst Road from Woodside all the way up to Upper Makefield. Uh, it crosses.
Over.
No, well, no, it, it's up, uh, on this area north of the site on Lindenhurst Road on the opposite side of the road. It then continues on the south side of Woodside all the way down to Dolington and Woodside, then, uh, north and south and east and west. So we have a pretty extensive bike path system in that area. The Bike Path Master Plan that's been adopted by the township proposes to have the bike path continue on the east side of Lindenhurst Road all the way down to Twining Road. So the Bike Path Master Plan shows it on this side of the road. There is a restriction with that um, guide rail and the culvert. There's maybe, I think, six feet between them, which is about enough room. I think on the west side of the culvert, I think it's only about five feet. Um, the existing bike path in front of the Heather Ridge Development is on the east side of the road and continues on partially onto the project and stops. So the alternatives are to have them continue a bike path up to Woodside Road and cross over to maintain the bike system. Uh, they're not obligated to put a bike path in. They're obligated to put a sidewalk in. They could put a sidewalk connection in along Lindenhurst Road all the way down connecting to this bike path. Uh, or the other alternative, third alternative is a fee in lieu of that so that the township at some point in time can put the bike path where it's proposed to be on the master plan. Um, there is a little bit of a steep slope right adjacent to the curb in the area of the project just south of the property line that it would require a little bit of grading work to put that side of it in, probably a, a low retaining wall, maybe like a two-foot retaining wall.
Is there a red light anywhere on that intersection right there?
Yes, the, uh, the intersection of Woodside Road and Lindenhurst Road is controlled by a traffic signal. So.
Except with the property though, I couldn't tell from.
Uh, pretty much does.
I think that like, I know the culvert sounds like it creates a am I misunderstanding from our, from our perspective, is that a pretty unique situation where if they wanted to put in the there isn't even really a way to put it in?
You'd be squeezing it in. I think it can fit through there, but it would be, it, it'll be narrow, that's all. And it would require, uh, a little bit of a, uh, safety railing so that people don't fall off into the creek.
Yeah.
And the traffic signal is right here. Here's the property line. It basically, you could cross over right there at the intersection and then continue on the bike path either to the east or to the north.
I think it's worth noting that the, uh, Bucks County Planning Commission suggested that this is part of the uh, Newtown to Scudders Falls Bridge Trail that's been identified. I was trying to see if it says what side of the road, uh, and that it's, is found on the township's walkway system map. And the township should work with the applicant to install this trail segment in accordance with, uh, with that study and a particular section of SADO. So, um, obviously the county's not going to cough up any money here, but, um, but it's just, uh, worth noting that it's part of a, because if the rest of the trail does get built from Newtown to Scudders, the Scudders Falls Bridge, we don't want a gap right here.
Right. Um, I actually live in Heather Ridge, so personally I'd like to see this connected, although I do understand the applicant's issue with the culvert and a little bit of grading along there and then having the sidewalk. Whereas the other side of the road, I think, which is the way it's on our master plan and is also the way it's on the county's master plan for bike paths would be more feasible and maybe have the applicant even construct it on the other side of the road if we obtain right of way, if necessary, might be a practical solution. Plus it wouldn't really require any alterations to the traffic signal. So you don't have that expense of altering the traffic signal permit. And they can bring that down to where they cross somewhere around Heather Ridge Drive.
What are we, what are we talking about in cost differential between sidewalk and bike path?
Uh, do you know the sidewalk, the differential in price between sidewalk and bike path?
Um.
Eight-foot sidewalk, I'm sorry, five-foot sidewalk and eight-foot bike path.
We came up with approximately $30,000 for the concrete sidewalk. Um, I don't know what the, uh, price would be for the asphalt bike path, but given asphalt versus concrete, I would imagine it's probably about two-thirds the cost of the, of the concrete work.
And Heath, to clarify, what side of the road would either of those be on?
The, well, the concrete would be on the, sorry, the concrete sidewalk would be on the west side of Lindenhurst. The bike path asphalt would be on the east side of Lindenhurst.
Yeah, I don't think we have a desire to force you to build a sidewalk that we don't want. I know our friends on the EAC would be happy to have less, you know, impervious surface there. If we're going to build a bike path at some point anyways, having you build a sidewalk to nowhere is just more square footage that rain can't penetrate.
I agree more.
Um.
Like I, I think our, my inclination on these has been like, we do run into issues and question marks with the sidewalk and is it really needed or whatever, but we've always erred on like, just based on my experience and knowing the supervisor, there is a general consensus and desire over the past many boards to build and develop up our sidewalk and bike path system.
Yes.
And so I'm not inclined just to waive it, but understanding that there are situations that require some level of flexibility. You know, in the past, we've done the, the fee in lieu of, you know, for as we build out the network over time.
Sure.
There are ostensibly funds there to help us do that. And that's, that's kind of where my mind is right now. And if anyone else has other thoughts on.
Need the microphone closer.
What side of the street are the electric? Reason why I ask is we've been sitting with the wood side closed for six months because there's hole in the middle of the, uh, the new bike.
Yours are on the east, on the east side.
That's an issue moving that pole. So where are the poles here?
They are on the east side where their proposed bike path would be on the township plan.
Right. Yeah. Now, in, on the east side of the road where it's shown on the Bike Path Master Plan, and as the county had noted on their plan, there is a lot of room from the pavement to the right of way. And so poles here would not be an issue because there's no issue with grades with woods with all that stuff. The only issue would be the same as on the west side where you have the guide rail and the culvert, you have a similar issue on that east side, although there is more room there on that side.
We're looking at bike pathing on the east. Then it's a sidewalk to nowhere on the west side.
Correct.
No, no, that, I guess that's my point. Like I'm, I'm getting, like, to me, it doesn't, on the surface, the township has a plan, has a plan to put a bike path on that road, which I ostensibly also acts as a sidewalk. And it's across the street, obviously, I, well, this seems like we wouldn't ask it though for the for the sidewalk and what's not that profitable.
We, but we certainly can, right? I mean, if we obtain the necessary rights to, to develop on the land across the street while they have someone out doing asphalt, laying asphalt, you know, it's a lot more convenience for them to have that same crew lay the asphalt. If, would your client be willing to undertake that effort if we were able to give the proper clearances to develop on the east side of the road?
I think in exchange for not building the sidewalk and not doing a fee in lieu of for the sidewalk on his side, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah.
And one point of clarification, uh, John said a sidewalk to nowhere. You actually would have a sidewalk to somewhere because it would connect to the bike path near Heather Ridge Drive and it would connect to a crossing at Woodside. So it would be a connection. It just wouldn't be the bike path connection that we had envisioned in our master plan for all the years. That would need to be on that east side of the road.
Barbara, how, sorry, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure. So you're talking about having a bike path of 1,150 feet installed across Lindenhurst from the property on the east side to be constructed at the Atkins expense?
Yes.
In exchange for not doing a fee in lieu of sidewalk on his side.
Wouldn't it just make more sense? Because who knows what's going to happen in the future to enforce this? Wouldn't it just make more sense to do a fee in lieu, knowing the money's there to pay for it? Because it could take years to get that, those acquisitions of rights away and land and, and I just never saw that done before. I would just think the fee in lieu would be more than sufficient to cover the costs.
It, it's a fair question. I have no idea what it would take to do what you, you propose.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what Ms. Kirk said. I think our client is open to a fee in lieu. I think if it would be cheaper, he'd absolutely be into that as well. Um, but going back to what Mr. Bush brought up earlier about the trail, um, and a connection there, I think we were considering using that as part of our, you know, opening up and including that in the plan as a way to offset some of these access points along the property. Um, but I, I agree. I think perhaps a fee in lieu could be worked out, um, in order for us to move forward. Um, that's, I think, kind of thought process.
It's cer- it's certainly, I mean, from my perspective. Yeah. Um, the fee in lieu of in this case is certainly worth exploring here.
Sure. I think it's at the rate of $50 per linear foot, correct?
We would have to check what the current going rate is.
I, I just said that because I remember one of the last.
That sounds about right, though.
So that would be over $57,000, which would be more than sufficient to lay the bike path across the road. My only concern is if you bind him, depending on how things work, acquisitions of the easements, it could take a few years. This could be done. This could be done, developed and sold and the property owner's not there anymore.
I, I wasn't familiar with the $50 going rate. I know that the $30,000 that Heath estimated was based on the thing.
Concrete.
Uh, concrete, and that's on our side. So I think a bike path would be a significantly lower cost and it'd be across the street. So I was, yeah, I was, I, um, I think that might be a bit more.
If the bike path were constructed on the west side, how narrow would it end up being crossing the stream?
I do have a close up Google image, if that's helpful of this little culvert.
Sure.
Like I said, my recollection is it would be five or six feet. So that would be a one lane crossing on the east side.
Yeah. So it's that, it's that wooded area on the right is what we're talking about?
Yes.
The image.
That's, that's the culvert crossing on our side.
That's yours, your side.
Looking on our side, yeah.
It's also on the plan on sheet three.
And as far as right of way acquisition, there's only one parcel that would require right of way to be obtained.
I'm just saying, as a general rule, you want to make sure that your conditions are simple enough that if need to enforce, you know you can.
And I, I think with me, this is, I mean, the discussion where we're going down with is, okay, it's either get, obtain the right of way and build the bike path, starting at Woodside where it could cross the street, right? And going down to the other end of the property. Or, um, or a fee in lieu of, and I think that would have to be determined and finalized, obviously, before that would have to be determined in the next, however, whatever time, timeline that is. Right?
I think our client would be open.
Installation of the bike path.
Yeah, yeah. How, how, you know, I'm not.
I mean, like, I, yeah, I mean, even though it's only one right of way that would need to be applied.
Time limit on it.
I don't know how quickly everybody's moving on it, how long it's going to take.
There's just got to be some sort of, I think everyone agreed on that, right?
All right, so if.
Some sort of finality to it at some point, right?
If I withdraw the, the thought of having them build on the other side of the street, right? Pull that back. So three options in front of us. Force them to build concrete sidewalk, right? Allow them instead to build a bike path if we, if the township decides that the bike path on their side of the property is what we want, right? Or three, negotiate a fee. Those are our three things.
I think our client would be open to any of them.
So for the purposes of tonight, what we could say is we can settle all the other matters and then leave that on the table for final negotiation after the fact or?
Honestly, that's really our only thing that's going to require a lot of discussion.
You could still make a recommendation as to one of those.
Yeah.
I think it matters whether it's, and, and maybe we don't make a recommendation.
Is your mic on?
Is it a sidewalk or is it a bike path?
I think it's a bike path. I think we're, because it's already a bike path.
I understand.
At the edge of the property.
Not required to do that.
They're not, yeah.
And so, I mean, I think we'd want to recommend a bike path, not a, since everything else is bike path.
Yes.
In lieu of a sidewalk.
In lieu of a sidewalk.
Yes.
And if we do fee in lieu of the fee in lieu of sidewalk would be utilized for the bike path.
And the trail.
Be allocated as such. Or earmarked and the fees would be paid as part of the development.
It doesn't have to be earmarked towards a bike path on or a sidewalk in that particular area, though. The sidewalk fee in lieu goes into a general sidewalk fee in lieu fund. So we could use that anywhere else in the township at our discretion. We'd prefer not to.
I, I don't think the client.
You could earmark it for that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And if we did, if, if they did construct a bike path on that side of the road, it would narrow to somewhere between five and six feet in width. Or we're talking, you have a five or six foot clearance and you'll end up with a two foot bike path. Does anyone have that answer?
I would have to check. I know I bike up that way periodically and I have no problem biking in that grass strip between the guide rail and the head wall.
Do we have a minimum standard for the width of a bike path? And if we can't build it as wide as X at a certain choke point, we won't build it.
Want to say four feet?
Probably four feet work just like a sidewalk.
Okay. So for the purposes of this, just to make a motion for tonight, for the, for the waiver, we can grant them a waiver from the construction of the sidewalk. If they are able to construct a bike path of our standard eight foot width, which is no less than four feet where it crosses the stream. If that is determined on the site to not be feasible, we will negotiate a fee in lieu of development with the township. Second. Does that work up here?
Just to confirm, the Department of Transportation set up bike lane should be a minimum of four feet wide.
Perfect.
Where is, where is this? If potentially, we're, we're talking about this bike path, you know, on one side, east side versus the west side of the street. Where does it eventually tie in going south to the existing bike path? Where does it? I mean, is there, is there easy visibility to be deciding between east or west? Or does it make all the sense of the world it should be on the west or?
So a portion of it is already built on the west.
The west.
And where, where it hits, it crosses actually into the start of their property, what would be designated lot two on the plans, then it ceases. It continues down the, at the next intersection on the east side of the road.
Okay, so go up in front of their property crossover.
Right, so you.
Join it. So we're crossing either south of their property or north.
Correct. And the north crossing is alighted.
With the bike path.
Right. The north crossing already has a traffic control. So there's already a traffic control there at that crossing point.
Right. So it's not, it's probably not, so it's assumed that when this is all said and done, that the bike path is going to end up on their side of the property.
No, they're, they're going to put it on their side of the property.
Like that?
Yes.
Well, because that's where the signal is.
Like right now, there's a bike path on the west side of the road, you're saying, right up until the.
Yeah. Jim, do you want to pull the aerial back up?
Yeah. And just for, uh, the part on the right of the screen is the east side of the road where the bike path master plan shows it. It's fairly flat in that area. There's lots of room between trees, utility poles off the road. The parcel that the applicant owns, uh, there's a little bit of a slope coming off of the curb and/or trees. So to build it, you'd be more right on top of the curb. And I think that's me right there riding on the shoulder of the road.
More likely than not.
Across the street is where it is on the bike path master plan. As you can see, now we're coming down to that guide rail. Uh, you could see on the west side, there's a few trees in the way there. Doesn't show very clearly, but you could see there's the head wall, there's the guide rail. And I believe there is sufficient room in that area to put a bike path. I mean, aside from the slope, and you can level things out, right, as, as you go, but aside from the slope, it seems this just gets it done. Right? A line on a map is fantastic, but a connected bike path is better.
One of the issues too, why I think we're running into this problem is because of the wetlands that does span. I know that it was mentioned about the EAC and not wanting to increase impervious, but I just want to throw that out there when we're talking about either side. If there's more pavement coming down, that is the reality of that issue.
And here's where the bike path ends, uh, near the end of their property at Heather Ridge. There's the detention basin on Heather Ridge.
Yeah. So John, that's what I was talking about. That's the existing stub of the bike, bike path on the west side of the road. Then you, you go the length of their entire property. It picks up again across the street on the east side of the road where the traffic signals located.
That's not, that's not where the plan is.
The master plan has it on the east side of the road, but someone built a portion of it on the west side of the road. Yeah. I mean, Jim, are you raising a strenuous objection or concern about putting it on the west side of the road?
Uh, it is more problematic engineering wise with the grades, the trees, a little bit of a slope, whereas on the east side where it is in the master plan, there are a lot less obstructions.
Though to build there, we would have to condemn a portion of the, the land or negotiate purchase rights. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I have to check to see how much right of way there is in that area.
Even if it was built on the east side, there's no connection piece to that south of that.
You'd be crossing an un, yeah, you'd be crossing an uncontrolled crossing.
Yeah, you have to cross somewhere. Yeah.
All right. So, so now, now what I think I'm hearing now, now this is getting clearer. You have the one option where you don't build the sidewalk and you build the bike path on your side of the road. The other one is we.
They pay us money and we go try and.
Rather than getting into what you proposed for, you pay the money to township for when the township eventually wants to bring the bike path up the other side, other side road.
It's going to cost us a lot more than $57,500 to get the rights.
And I, I, I just, I feel like, just based on everything, if it's feasible, I like the idea of continuing an already existing bike path up the front of the property. And then when we're going north of that, we have a street with a signal right there that at the end of that, right at the end, bike pathing and cross over the street and go where the township originally intended it. But for whatever reason, that got, you know, sent western.
Yep.
That makes sense?
I do. Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Wait, should we, before the motion or after the motion? Okay. All right.
Did we go through all the used?
Not yet.
No, I mean, this is just for the one thing. Should we go through the whole thing first before we?
Okay.
Yeah, let's.
But I think Mr. Dumas said, with the exception of the sidewalk issue, everything else, other, other than the other wave, waivers requested, everything else was will complies.
There were, there were just two other things I had, my reading through the stuff today. That, and maybe I'm, other guy might have stuff too. One was the shared driveway. There was a comment, I can't remember which thing, but just making sure it's needed, like somebody's responsible for it. Because the next people to buy the house, you know, just anytime you have a shared driveway, I feel like that's, that's the smart thing to do. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Did you have a preference?
That was in the Bucks County Planning Commission.
Yeah, I answered which one it would be on.
Well, generally speaking, if it's a shared driveway, the easement would be a cross easement between both property owners in order to, um, list who's responsible for what.
Maintenance.
Access.
No removal, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good.
You said you had two items, I think.
The other one was, um, oh, just in, and I wasn't at the, um, zoning hearing board meeting and everything and I didn't, I was trying to read and understand, uh, the EAC's letter in terms of the 50 feet and when the 20 years of the plants grow in and like, like somebody just helped me understand what was actually agreed to. What's the intent of the zoning hearing board and how does that differ with what they all?
You want to take that or?
Uh, sure. Uh, at the zoning hearing board, um, the applicant had showed the hundred foot buffer that was required. Uh, one of the variances they requested was to have a 12% encroachment into that in order to do a little bit of grading off the house and to put their infiltration trench in where they got good test results. One of the conditions that the zoning hearing board had was that maybe you should revegetate that buffer or 50 feet of that buffer. So that in essence, uh, 20 years from now, when those trees get in, you technically almost wouldn't even have needed the variances because 20 years later, if you revegetate that, you'll have the 50 foot buffer that's required. So that was one of the conditions. On the plan, they inadvertently took off the hundred foot line and showed it as 50 foot. And the EAC was questioning, how do they have a 50 foot buffer? It should be 100. So it's basically just, they have to redraw that line in and spell it out. It's fairly straightforward.
It's a will comply. Um, we had a little bit of a miscommunication between one of my engineers and one of my designers.
Got it. All right. Well, that.
Yeah.
The answer I could hope for.
I had a conversation with the EAC about that on Sunday.
So is, is that resolve their issues about planting the replant trees on site?
It's a will comply.
And that was one of the conditions that you replant that. So when they show that replanting.
I understand.
It will comply. Yeah.
Do we want to go through the other?
Everything, other than that, with the outside the discussion with the sidewalk, was there anything else on here that was not compliant issue? Waiver.
I, I will say generally the EAC prefers that we not waive the requirement that a registered landscape architect review the, um, the landscape plan.
We're fine with that.
Okay. So we're going to strike waivers two, three and four.
Hold on.
What?
Hold on.
This is the Remington.
Yes.
And we're fine with you complying with all the comments, obviously, uh, the sidewalk question. Also note, I think the planning commission had a comment uh, regarding the sanitary note that's on the plan. Believe the plan notes, it's an on lot system.
Everything, everything is going to be, um, public sewer. We're pumping it now to an existing, um, not lateral, but main extension uh, that was provided as part of the toll development, uh, behind this house, the existing house. For, uh, my apologies, we can go back to the waivers. I think items two and three. We're not saying no to the waivers, but what we are suggesting is the note uh, or, or agreement.
Yep.
Takes the place of items two and three.
Yep. Waiver, waiver press condition of.
We're not putting in both sidewalks and bike path.
Yep.
Just waiver, or just striking four then regarding the landscape architect. Is that correct?
Solution that's going to be made will address the waivers for two and three.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Okay. Fair enough.
And this is just simple, just a non-technical guy, but, um, to go from 18 inches to six inch pipe, is that just because of the size of this subdivision or code written for bigger places?
What we're talking about are pipings from downspout leaders predominantly. Um, and unfortunately, you're not the only municipality who has that requirement. Um, in some instances, I would say that it's um, historic from the need or requirement to use concrete pipe. With HDPE and PVC pipes being utilized more frequently, the need for an 18 inch pipe, um, really kind of can go away and you're not going to see an 18 inch diameter pipe for a downspout leader. So we are asking for that relief.
Next, and you're good with that?
Yeah, as long, I would just ask for calculations, uh, for the roof leaders to show the conveyance capability of the pipes, but that's a typical, yeah, 18 inches is excessive for.
So I was just, it was noteworthy for someone who doesn't really know the details of that.
We, we granted those same waivers on the, uh, the historical property on Lindenhurst that, that is, is redeveloping and, uh, waiver eight, the, um, the board of supervisors just accepted a similar waiver on the point based on the change in materials, manufacturer specifications are one foot of cover, not two feet of cover.
Got it.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? Any public comment?
Is there any public comment online?
There's no public comment online.
All right. I guess, uh, who wants to make the motion?
All right. So I got a Frank in motion with some. Alright, so I got a Frank in motion with some Barbara notes and some stuff that's up in my head. Frank in motion. Uh, okay, so I move that the applicant be, uh, granted a waiver from code requirements to require sidewalks and bike paths, given that they will construct a bike path consistent with our standard eight foot bike path width across their, along their frontage. Where feasible, where not feasible, such as the stream crossing, the applicant will be permitted to go to as low as a four foot width. If the applicant determines and engineering determines such a bike path is not feasible for construction, they will negotiate a fee in lieu with the township.
Excellent note. Whoever wrote that.
That was that your, was that your full motion?
That is my full motion. Am I missing something?
So in other words, approval of the plan subject to compliance with all recommendations.
Oh, I need one mega motion with all everything.
It might be easier.
Four is, is. I think that was the one we struck correctly.
Okay, in addition, uh, the applicant's request for waiver number four to not require the landscape plan to be signed and sealed by a registered landscape architect is withdrawn by the applicant. Correct?
Second.
And, uh, upon agreement with these terms, uh, the planning commission will grant final preliminary and final approval for the fifteen eleven Lindenhurst Road minor subdivision. Subject to compliance with all other
recommendations.
Recommendations of the township's engineers and consultants.
And the remaining waivers.
And the remaining waivers.
Subject to the discretion.
Subject to the discretion.
Of the board of supervisors.
Of the board of supervisors.
Help you God.
That is the end of this motion.
Okay.
It smells.
Any final questions or comments on that?
Could someone second that thing, please?
Oh, yeah, second. I thought there wasn't a second in there. It's the only thing.
Was.
Okay, anything else on that? Anyone want to rewrite it?
No.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone not in favor?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That's two thirds of the motion.
There was no chaos. It wasn't chaotic. It was fine.
Good night.
Good night.
That's what I said last. Okay, God, I got it. Okay, so next we have, okay, comments on the twenty forty draft vision plan. The Bucks twenty forty draft vision plan.
Like to know how much money Bucks is giving us to implement the vision plan? How much money is the county giving us to implement the vision plan?
It's not, but it's more than money. It's love and support. Alright, I don't know. Where, what do you guys? Does anyone have anything?
I, I, I read this and it looked to me like it was marketing materials that you could have seen probably ninety-eight percent of the counties in the country do. It's got some decent things in it, but it's, it, 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 there are things that it could have in here. You know, it, it hits the highlights, but they talk about, you know, alternate transportation and coming up with different things and even in the park and rec, it talks about, uh, e-bicycles and things like that. But what's really glaringly missing is there's not any real, or it may, it might be in here, but I didn't read it with a fine tooth comb and I didn't see it. Anything about encouraging, um, development of charging stations for cars, um, for electronic charging and what, what comes right after that for hydrogen cars, which is going to be right on its heels. And there's really nothing in here about that for transportation. Um, for economic development, it seemed to focus on, you know, repurposing older buildings and properties for different types of commercial use. And there's a separate section on, you know, the need to encourage housing and more affordable housing, but it doesn't marry the two concepts together in any sort of way. And it just seems like there's a lot more that could have been in here. That, than, than is in here. I, I, I know it's big picture vision, but you can also give direction with big picture vision that's, that's missing. Um, economic development, there's nothing here about sort of attracting certain types of industries. Um, that's, it's just there's not, it, it's empty.
Um, so in terms of the, I, I agree with you. Uh, in terms of the EV stations, um, and again, I don't know if it's explicitly called out, but I, I do know I've, I've been to a webinar by the Bucks County Planning Commission for EV charging stations. So I, I, I do think they have a best practice, uh, standards guide and they have like webinars and education about it, but I agree, they could have kind of. Yeah, that, that's definitely a trend with in terms of the federal governments kind of really pushing that.
They actually did put just one phrase in page forty-seven under opportunities and directions. Talking about the infrastructure investment and jobs act will enable Pennsylvania to receive lots of money to build a network of EV chargers. So it's one phrase in seventy-two pages.
Yeah.
So they touch, like you said, they touched very lightly on many things.
They did.
Yeah. And I agree with you on the economic development, uh, very light.
I think there's two takeaways for me. The first is on economic development. It's not even anything to do with the county. It's that we need to keep a close eye on what happens with the airport in Trenton. And I know there's, we, you know, at the board level, I think we're, we're working to slow that down, if not stop that, but if it proceeds and continues, we need to accept it as a reality and work with local business owners and others to make sure that that's to the benefit of the township. We have a lot of underutilized commercial space on the north end of the township and we should see if we can help. Um, or what we can do to help make sure that that gets filled out. Um, the other is that they did talk about change in pandemic work patterns. It was really interesting. It was at RJ's Bagels over the weekend. I was speaking with the owner, Anthony, and he doesn't open now until seven o'clock in the morning because people aren't commuting to work anymore. They're not stopping in in the morning to get on the train to go to New York and all those things like they used to. Um, so, you know, patterns for our businesses have changed and I don't think we've changed anything. You know, maybe we don't have to, but as a township, I don't think we've looked at the new reality of the way that people live and work in LMT.
Need your microphone. John, you need your microphone. Or pull it closer.
Yeah, I mean, the pandemic was so recent, I don't think we've been really get an understanding of what the fallout will eventually be.
So look at the survey and you look at the top answers on why you moved here and why you want to stay. None of it has to do with they're getting bigger or busy. We're all about open space, quality of the county, road permits, like open spaces, like. We don't need any.
Economic development is different than knocking, you know, plowing out farms to build high rises, right? It's just about making sure, and that's not even for this commission. What I'm saying is the township needs to look at ways to make sure that we're a business friendly township because we've already developed the real estate for them and they're not in it. So that's not a matter for us.
Yeah, there was a, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, there was a six percent decrease in those who drove to work and a seven percent increase um, for those who work from home.
It, it's still really evolving because I mean.
Oh, I agree.
Just, I, I, I just read in some, uh, legal magazine today that, you know, some of the large, largest firms in the country are now going, requiring their younger associates instead of three days, four days, and they're in the office and they're going to be compensated based on their attendance in the office. And, you know, that may be an outlier, but there are other industries that are doing that as well. So I, it, it's far from settled. Um, and there are other, other businesses which are clearly going the other direction.
I, I look at this thing and, um, it's, it's a little, it's, it's a very good looking report. There's a lot of interesting data here as you go through, but for the average person, you really want to know what the direction of what the planning commission or the county wants to go to and what's like sort of their vision for Bucks County. Nobody's reading all this.
No.
But it also.
Too much like, like they needed a front summary section, like here's what we're doing with this. If you want more information, here's the eighty page report behind that.
But it makes sense. Does this planning commission feel that they need to, the county needs to sit for another year or so to see how things pan out since the pandemic before creating such a vision plan?
I see, I, you know, there's going to be something else next year. Like I, I, look, there's always going to be open ends to these kinds of, this is my agreeing with it. But I, I just think like, there's a, they're putting, they're trying, they're saying they're putting a stake in the ground for what they want the next twenty years. What they want. But they've put so much in here, threw so much out here. I, I feel like it makes me feel like they're not really trying to lay, lay stake anything. They're just saying, look at all the work we did.
There's, there's no, there's no executive.
Five pages executive summary, like this is what we found important. This is what we think the township should, should focus on. This, and they say, hey, if you want to learn why page fifty to seventy-five is the result of our survey and this tells us why.
Yeah, and I, and I'd love to see recommendations of how we can implement these, these visions. I mean, we talk about acting on climate change and improving infrastructure and we just approved a bike path today, right? More or less. Um, I know my friends in the EAC would have wanted me to, you know, talk to that builder about using pervious pavement. But that's not in our code today and that's a thing that we could do. We could change our code to say that we want to do pervious pavement for bike paths and, and other things in the future. So there are things we can act on. It would be nice to get a little help from the county and suggestions of here are things that you can do in ordinances, you can, you can craft to help implement these.
I think that's one thing they did do a good job is they were very candid in, in saying that um, like permitted uses in the zoning ordinance is how things actually get built. So townships need to be a little bit more realistic with what their zoning ordinance says, say, because a lot of them are still in the mind frame of post-World War Two. Um, like suburban sprawl, so um, you know, looking at parking minimums, walkability, connectivity. So um, I, I think they were, you know, pretty candid in saying like, you know, you, you kind of need to be looking at your zoning ordinances and changing them because that's how things by right get built.
I feel bad for saying. I guess, like we're, you know, I'm saying publicly, there's a lot of good work in here. I mean, the stuff that I gleaned is really interesting information. But I, I just like you do, you do this and nobody's getting. That's my, and all they need to do is just lay a couple stakes in the ground saying, this is what we think's important. Here's our summary and then just, hey, don't, don't get rid of any of this. Have it out there for, so I, so people can look at the things that they're interested in or they find important and they don't have to read seventy pages of pretty detailed things to try and figure out what's applicable.
So is that something you feel that you should let them know?
Well, so.
I don't know if everyone agrees.
One of the, one of the things I thought of the last part of it, I think they call it like big ideas. And I know the, the plan I made when I was at Temple called out like specific recommendations. So maybe we, they could add a a fifth section or even reword the fourth section to say like recommendations or something that's more digestible that they're recommending that townships do.
Executive summary, I mean, maybe that's not the best term, but that's exactly what this is talking about. You know, these, these. I mean, I was, I'm the work of economic development, middlesex. And I wouldn't doubt if it's the same consulting firm that put this together, you know, it was called twenty forty. I mean, I, I think it goes backwards. Generally, the consultants come in, they do it. Whereas you would think the most logical way to do is the consultants meet individual plans. In other words, instead of putting together the plan, calling the. You would think it'd be the other way around. Let me come in and get your opinions and then do the.
So, um, it also, they also kind of say in the website, it says, we are presented, we, excuse me. We are proud to present this draft plan, which is the initial document of the Bucks twenty forty, building our future together comprehensive plan. So I think it's a part of the overall bigger picture. And I'm assuming, I've been read it, but that Bucks twenty forty, building our future together comprehensive plan is probably a little bit more um, encompassing to what you're addressing. So just, just, just for context.
Comprehensive plan is, is composed of the, the, some of the parts.
Yes, exactly.
And, and look, for the most part, your, your deal with people, like, yeah, so you're full-time professionals in every municipality. The people are really going to make decisions and drive the direction of, they're, they're like people. They're getting paid, you know, a couple of cents a year. Uh, sit in meetings and do, 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 do as much work and try and move things in their township or municipalities as best as they can. And they don't know necessarily that the way the township's doing it is not necessarily right or current or anything. They're just looking to keep doing, you can't give them that. They're not going to look at that, that to try and figure out, am I doing it? Can I do it better?
When you, you look at.
Working to get it done.
You look at to that point, number four on their big ideas with regulatory flexibility, which talks about encouraging mixed-use spaces to discourage the use of cars. It goes to that like town planning concept of the third place that isn't home or work. It's kind of something in the middle, which I'm a huge, huge fan of, right? I've lived in towns in the past that have had that. It's wonderful, but you put that into the reality of living in lower makefield and being on this planning commission where people say, nope, I don't want a mixed use. I don't want these things. So is that guidance for a planning commission? Is that vision for a board of supervisors? Is that something for, you know, for the county to work on and implement, right? So from the perspective here, me in this seat, that's my question. Like what is, what from here is for me to pay attention to and to, to, to think about and what is for other parts of local government?
But I mean, I, I think for, for the most part, like I, I look at all the, like the role we're in now. Like they, this has to be first and foremost to the full-time professionals like you guys and David and the boards of supervisors or the, the councils and mayors or whatever your municipality does. Is there anyone setting? I'm, I'm, I'm only doing, like I, I'm at the service of the supervisors. They don't have to do what I say. Right?
Yeah, exactly. Cause it's.
They're, they're.
Advisory.
Like, so they want to see something different from the planning commission. Like they're not going to tell us exactly what to do, but they're going to put people and they're going, going to make decisions and go get like to point a certain, certain direction. They're going to, like we, the tree ordinance is a great example, like but the supervisors decided finally, like this is the direction we want to go. And they put their money where they're not busy, they're not busy with it. And they've actually, I give them credit, the various boards, they, they've actually gone back and refined it. It's important enough to keep looking at. And that's sent the message to me as a planning commission person that that's, I'm not going against.
Hey, I, I, I would agree with what you've said, but, but as a planning commission, here in other towns, we also are able to make recommendations. Or, you know, on our own, without, without getting direction from the top, you know, that's.
No, and, and, and I, and, and I know there is, look, if I see something that's wrong-headed, I think is wrong-headed. I'm going to say it. Abs- absolutely. But they, overall, if they, you know, it's, it's, we are only a recommending body to them. If they want to do something different, they recognize it is totally their purview to do whatever they want. Yep. And that's why these things need to speak to them. And that's what I was talking about before with essentially, you're not talking about career professionals in this, uh, work. You know, my people who have other jobs or other things, they're busy getting pulled with, you know, there's twenty of these committees that they have.
So, um.
To simplify.
Coming back to what do you want, if anything, to do by way of a comment? Because the deadline is Friday.
Okay.
And if you want something to be submitted, I'd like to have clear direction to draft it and get it circulated.
I would propose, I don't, I don't think we need a motion or anything for this, but I would propose, if you guys agree, that we go back to and tell them just that, saying, there's a lot of good work, a lot of good information here. It's not very clear what you're recommending, like the whole county should do. And maybe you should put together a summary so people who don't do this forty hour week can understand.
Do you, do you want to try and draft an email to the group? And then, or. And then, or somebody can take on drafting emails to the group that, that just kind of boils down this last couple of minutes of discussion.
You want Dan to try to draft something and email it to you guys?
Sure.
And I think actually what Adrian just said kind of seems like it's the sentiment of the committee.
Seems great.
Anything else? Is there anything else besides what Adrian, uh, said that you think should be a key component? Or is that kind of sum it up?
And the last thing I'll add, um, if, if anyone in the township watching or just in general has comments, they can send them to bucks2040 at buckscounty.org. And then they also, their next meeting is January 3rd from two to three, if anyone's interested because um, input, community input's obviously the most important part of the plan. Um, and you know, they're kind of striving for people first planning. So just putting that out there.
And the county did have a bunch of open house forums for this plan, including one hosted here at Lower Makefield Township. I think we only had maybe 15 to 20 people show up, which was 15 to 20 people more than they had at the prior one, where not a single person showed up. So we tried to heavily advertise it and we only got 15 to 20 people who expressed an interest.
So, all right. So Dan, you're going to do that? If you
Yeah.
Feel free to give me a call, whatever, if you want to bounce over, but the only, my only recommendation here is just, don't, don't feel the need to beat around the bush. I'm not saying being a jerk about it, but be straightforward about it.
Okay, yeah.
Dan can draft it, circulate it to you for review and then compile it into your final version to be sent up to the.
How, just cause, just for my education, how does that work? Do we, will we just like send a email to the Bucks County Planning Commission saying this is our comment from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, that's how they all accept it.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I can type up something tomorrow.
Do we need a town crier to go and like unfurl a scroll and declare it at them? Some of our ordinances are old enough that that might be in there.
You know, just the guy to use this.
What's next? All right. Um, oh, now we got the open space thing.
So apparently once the zoning ordinance was amended to deal with the open space issue. And the partner amendment to the subdivision and land development ordinance was presented to the supervisors. Somebody eh, came up with questions as to the definition of open space. So this went round, round and round. What I've provided to you is basically the definition that was approved and recommended by the planning commission for open space. And the sections highlighted in yellow are the additions that were suggested. And I've been asked by the supervisors through direction from the township manager to prepare amendments to both zoning and SALDO to modify the definition of open space.
What's highlighted in yellow here is not.
Is not what we have here. I brought a copy of the original version. I tried to go back through it to compare the two.
It was just a couple of clarifying additions. Okay. A pool isn't open space. Works for me. Sorry, Barbara. You said developed recreational amenities containing impervious surfaces. So that could create an opening that if I made a pickleball court with a pervious surface, I could include it, right?
I would say not including recreational facilities.
Would you give examples of?
Courts, pool facilities. I didn't create this. This wasn't
Okay.
By me. This was done at the request of one of the supervisors. I have absolutely no idea, but I don't think that that'll be in any section of being developed into any type of residential facilities.
Right. So it says not including recreational facilities.
Exclude that. So what, so, so in the future going forward, if you want to call something open, we as township want to call something open space. It, it's not recreational. It's not.
Right. So if somebody went, so an easy example, if somebody wants to build a cluster style housing and they're going to put a mini golf course in for their residents, that facility is not to be counted as the open space. Which is what, uh, that's how I gathered what they were asking for.
I, I'm not the attorney on this commission, but I think that giving the examples in the parenthetical actually works against us instead of force.
I guess my, my thing is.
And I don't even know what courts means, recreational facilities, example, courts.
Tennis courts, basketball courts.
There may be other kind of courts.
Right. I, I think the parentheticals actually hurt us.
That was recommended by one of the supervisors.
You know, I think maybe, uh, the wording here is just slightly off. I think it may have been intended to be recreational facilities containing impervious surfaces. For example, courts, pool facilities and other developed recreational amenities.
I understand that fully, but you can build a volleyball court on open space and it's still open space because sand is a pervious surface. So I, I think that just recreational facility should be the end of it. If it's open space, there's no recreation facility that gets built on it. Right?
I was happy with the first definition.
Yeah.
It's, I guess what, what's going through our mind is like, like we've had, when we're redoing this, we've had one sort of type of thing left, right? In our mind, we're, we're thinking about these cluster communities and the ordinance we did earlier in the year. But this would be applied to anything.
Yes.
But like if we buy a farm and put a driveway to some maintenance facility on that farm, that's not open space anymore?
Correct. The driveway is not open space. Well, it's, it's, no, no, it's, it's.
The whole thing.
The open space is only applicable through the open space ordinance that we put in. Right? So putting on your driveway on your farm is limited by the current pervious surface.
No, no, no. If the definition of, if this were to become the definition of open space. Didn't, I thought what we did was we went through and we clarified that basically any place that open space was defined in any ordinance was made uniform.
Correct.
This would have more than the effect.
We went through every section that did a definition of open space to make sure that everything matched. So if you were reading section one of the zoning ordinance under definitions and it said open space. And then you jumped forward to section 35 and there was a definition of open space, they both were to match.
Yeah. So like, I don't have a problem not including that, but depending on how you read this, it could, now granted, there's not that many big things left. Like, look, what, what's the big farm out on a?
Think about this. Five Mile, Five Mile Woods is considered recreational facility. So we're going to I mean, under this definition, that wouldn't be.
But that's, that's, that's why, yeah, that's, that's a great example.
So maybe what we need to do is put not including streets, active recreational facilities, because you have passive recreational facilities that are like woods and things kept in their natural state, but open to the public. Versus active recreational facilities like basketball courts and things like that.
And, and Five Mile Woods isn't alone. There's just, you know, there's some other little things and who knows what future land may.
I agree. I was happy with the first definition, like I said.
I, I think before we move forward in any action on it, we need a little bit more direction from the board on what.
Coming from the board.
I understand what they're trying, what the problem they're trying to solve is. Cause we spent a couple of months solving open space problems and I just, I'm not. I can take the action item to go talk to the board when I'm in my board chair in a week to find out what the goal here is.
The.
So what, yeah, what generated this?
Yeah, Dan.
What caused this now?
Requests by Mr. Granger.
But, but, but what, what was?
I don't know.
Uh, I think it was specifically in regards to the recreational facilities aspect in the definition, right?
Yeah.
Was the.
I thought it was recreational facilities with
Impervious.
Pervious surface.
Yeah, that's the main reason for that.
Pools, um, basketball courts, stuff like that, paved surfaces. Although maybe in talking to everyone here, it could be all recreational facilities.
Yeah.
Is what they, so I think, uh, like to Colin's point, I think they need to, just a little clarification.
Yeah. I mean, I had, I had. Yeah, I firmly understand the questions because I thought that when we got through that process of a couple of months, it was clear you can't build any structure on open space. So now we're being further asked to define.
So would it, would you say like not including streets? How about if we put, instead of taking, say in recreational, say facilities containing impervious surfaces such as courts, pool facilities and other developed amenities?
I think we need to talk to Dan about this because the impervious, if I want to build the world's biggest, if I want to build a giant pickleball complex, because pickleball is all the rage, I can put impervious asphalt down. If, if we say impervious surfaces, right? As long as it's pervious, I can do it.
Yeah. And I think you really need to, to get a clarification. So, and that's actually the, uh, paving the entire world with the big pickleball court that's porous pavement.
Yes.
Um, that's always been the argument against just allowing the wholesale use of porous pavement for residential. Cause I've actually had people tell me, I want to do my entire backyard as porous pavement. I believe it or not, they have said that at a public meeting too.
That's great.
Well, it's called the state of Arizona. They spray paint the gravel green.
Just, I think the question is, well, like what, like honest, an honest, honest question, like what are you, I think there's, this is obviously purposeful. What are you trying to accomplish here?
Yeah.
It's like, I don't think like if we have, you know, Patterson Farm that we leased to whoever, the, what Sam or whatever, the farmer. And if we decide like, okay, there's something happened to the barn. We just want to give them like a little access with this tractor to get into the cornfields. It, it just makes sense for everybody. And we put a little per, like 20 feet of road on the farm now. That's not open space anymore? Just, how do you port that off?
Listen, I, listen, for the, for the sake of, as the board liaison to the planning commission, the intent of the board is not clear enough to give this commission direction to work. So I'd like to make a motion to table this agenda item to the next meeting of the planning commission. Do I have a second? Call the vote.
The good, the good thing is that, is that the amendments to the zoning, zoning ordinance and the open space ordinance were already approved. It's just, this is much more of a smaller scale. You know what I mean? This, this wasn't in front of them.
So, um, Colin, do you want to take that sample and present it to Dan and, okay?
Uh, I'll call Dan tomorrow. I'll call Dan tomorrow. Yeah, I'm going to figure this out. Thank you.
Did you guys vote?
Yeah. Can you call the vote on tabling?
All those in favor of the thirded motion?
Aye.
All right. So move. Oh wait, are we supposed to ask a comment? I'm assuming no one's online. Is someone online? Okay. All right. All right. And then the wireless, amended wireless communications facility.
Okay. If you'd like, I'll take that. As you may be aware, a lot of the, uh, legal aspects of cell tower regulation have been changed at the federal level. Our ordinance was done probably about 15 to 20 years ago and is out of date with the current thinking on wireless communications facilities. Uh, ours was mainly based on tower-based facilities back when it was done to regulate the location of and the parameters under which you could put a cell tower in the township. Uh, we went to a consultant law firm who is an expert in cell towers. And they provided the draft wireless communications facility ordinance. Uh, this version, uh, we have the tower-based and non-tower-based wireless communication facilities both defined. And, um, we actually have it left to the way it is now that they're permitted only in the areas designated under our former radio and telecommunications facility district overlay. Uh, that area of the township where it's permitted, there's only a few areas. One is along I-95 near the rest area where the existing tower is. There's another area along I-95 near the Hampton Inn where another tower is. An additional area is in the C3 zoning district. Uh, between Falls Township border is on the west side of Oxford Valley Road. Up to the limit of that C3 zone. And there's also a tower there on Old Oxford Valley Road. Uh, the tower we have here behind the township building, uh, was done before the ordinances were in place. So that's not in a, um, the overlay district that currently exists. That is grandfathered in. So this ordinance, basically it goes through and clarifies definitions to be more in keeping with the current legal practices that are out there and legal standards from the federal government for that. Uh, one thing to note, the small wireless communication facilities, which are typically not towers, but basically like telephone poles. You may have seen them in areas where you just have a pole sticking up. There's no wires like you'd see for a telephone pole. It is purely just a wireless communication relay tower. Um, several years ago, that was supposed to be the next big thing in wireless communications. It hasn't really taken hold that much in this area. I know they have some of those in Northampton Township, Doylestown Township, a few other areas. But this would, uh, now regulate that in accordance with, uh, the government standards. Uh, we would, uh, allow these to be located within public rights of way. Uh, one of the areas that, uh, there was concern about is taking a residential development where there are no poles and just slapping in a tower in the middle of, uh, Heritage Oaks on South Ridge Circle, where there are no other, uh, underground facilities. This ordinance would require utilities to be located underground. Or be located on existing poles. So you couldn't create a new pole in a development or zoning district or portion of an area where all the utilities are already underground. So if you had a development where you had telephone poles throughout the development, adding an extra pole or locating on the poles isn't a big deal. If you put it in the middle of Heather Ridge, where everything is underground, it would not be permitted. So they would have to be going along mainly, uh, major roads. Or in areas where there already are poles. Uh, there are a lot of standards in this, uh, including talking about locating on top of existing buildings. Um, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go through this, the fine tooth comb. This is sort of our first blush at this. Uh, there's a lot of information there.
Does this have any impact on the current discussion?
Well, their plan is already submitted, so this would not be necessarily applicable to them. Um, one of the other things that had been just tossed around is some alternative, uh, locations for poles. Right now, this ordinance contemplates that we have a district where poles are allowed and we're sticking with that district. Uh, one of the other things for the planning commission to think about is do we look to possibly expand that district? Whether through allowing wireless communication facilities on top of existing commercial buildings. Um, so that you could expand the area that is covered by these, not towers, but by these cellular facilities. Or do we actually look at where in the township can we place towers? That might provide the best coverage of cell service without unduly impacting neighborhoods where 150-foot tower in your backyard maybe isn't the best idea. You have to get your microphone. Where?
It was, it would be, um, north of Yardley, probably about half a month. Bridge there that goes over from one of those, you know, side streets. Goes over the canal and right there. That's an area and one pole sticking up.
Is that a brand new, uh? No, is that the brand new bridge? They just replaced the one bridge.
Pedestrian bridge.
Mary Yardley Bridge. Uh, there used to be a Pico substation. Okay, that actually is in Yardley Borough. So thank you. Uh, you just made my life easier.
That's another one. That bridge done in like a month and it's been closed ever since. Kind of like the bike path on Woodside.
It's always about those transitions into the area, sort of like the culvert we talked to in getting across it. Yes.
Talk about this and like permitting towers and stuff. Is there an argument, I guess, against? Just the notion of defining where it will allow.
We, we already do. We have a, we have an overlay. So this is just 5G works differently than 4G and prior generations of technology. So with 5G, they're able to deliver the signal with lower power with these smaller, much more cost affordable for the carrier towers. So it's like less high energy coming out of them and things like that. So, um, I think the idea here is before Verizon builds whatever the hell they want, because the telecommunications act overrides almost anything we want to do. We try and create some happy and nice rules. So to that end, Jim, is it, uh, they're, they won't come, but is it possible to invite representatives from the tower and wireless industry to come and talk to us and give us their input on this preferred, proposed ordinance?
We can always ask.
F this, you mean, or the, or the cell tower companies?
The companies that construct cell towers.
I, I don't know if that you really want to go there because they'll, every time I've dealt with them, they throw out the telecommunications act of 1934, the telecommunications act of 1996. And when all else fails, if it's not acceptable, we'll file a federal suit. So I don't know if it's really worth the aggravation of listening to them pontificate.
There.
Although I'm always in favor of, it doesn't hurt to talk to people uh, to see where they're coming from, to see if there's some happy medium that maybe will work for the benefit of all residents of the.
There are, there are third parties that build these towers that aren't Verizon, that don't sue us all the time, that that might be willing to take a look and say, hey, I know you said this, but this actually isn't feasible because of X, Y, or Z.
Is this basically a pretty standard model ordinance? It's just been modified to, it, it lower makefield.
Uh, it's sort of a newer model ordinance because the, the laws changed over the last year or so.
It's a pretty much current model ordinance to adopt.
Correct.
What kind of exists that we have already. So.
And there's not much tailoring necessarily to lower makefield because it's basically, here's what is, the only tailoring is that we only allow it.
The overlay.
The towers, that is, in our overlay. And that's why the question came up. Would we want to allow it in areas other than just our overlay?
Both of your comments, is, is it the case that we're moving away from towers and more towards the poles? But why would we want to have, I mean, if that's, if that's what we're doing, if that's where technology is, why would we want to open up more areas for towers?
So I, I work in the industry. Um, the movement away from towers towards poles is largely driven by urban environments where they can't build a tower in the middle of Manhattan. Um, and it's really expensive to rent the top of a building because it's covered in antennas. Um, so that has led to better technology to live peacefully in an environment like lower makefield where people don't want a 150-foot tower. Right? So, you know, I mean, I might be a minority amongst folks on the board, but I would say that I, I would love to engage on this and craft something that does give a bit more leeway. From the standpoint of we don't give leeway, they're just going to build whatever they want because they'll cite the communication telecommunications act of 1972 and, uh, whatever, you know, upstate New York court filing that says if one person doesn't have cellphone signal, they can do whatever they want to provide service to that one person. Um, so the suggestion to allow the construction of towers on top of commercial buildings or poles, I think is a fantastic one, right? Um, it lets them cover more parts of the township, uh, without having to build giant towers. So.
So when they put these poles on top of commercial buildings, how hot, how tall do they go at that point? Are they, you know, 60 feet on top of the building or is?
The definition here of the small facilities is 50 feet or less. So we'd be, we'd be talking a 20, 30 to up to a 50-foot mast. So, you know, that's why I'm saying I'd like to talk to someone, I'm sure the consultants know their work. Right? But I also know third parties who build these things. I'd like to talk to them to find out if we say yes to this, are we going to find 50-foot towers on top of every 50-foot building? So now we're just back to 100 foot, you know, I source.
The other question I have is you mentioned that some of those small cell facilities were installed in Northampton Township. I happen to have been at the township when that came in. The problem is they weren't called small cell tower facilities. They actually got certification from the Public Utilities Commission, which made them utilities that meant that they could put their little boxes on existing towers within the rights of way because they were utilities. If this is going to go in that direction, you might want to, I don't know if the consultants know if it's going towards the direction of these facilities being considered utilities, this may all be moot.
Yeah, that I'm not sure of. Uh, I remember in Northampton, it was the big.
Called distributive antenna systems. I know, I was smack in the middle of it.
And the biggest problem they had was what I mentioned early on is that they just decided to go into developments where there are no other above ground utilities and slap in a pole literally in someone's yard.
As long as it was within a existing utility easement, that's what gave them the ability. They were declared and certified as a utility by the PUC.
Yeah, a good, basically what I'm hearing, and this sounds like almost like our ordinance doesn't really want to define in a way where someone feels restricted it more want, you want to create something that's helping nudge people in the direction you want to go.
I'd say that's a very good assessment of it. Uh, you know, we could, uh, tell people tough luck, sue us, but then they could sue us and win and then we don't get one. Whereas if we push them in a direction that gives them a little bit of latitude, but not too much, yet at the same time regulates it.
Go sue our neighboring townships and then comply with our. Yeah.
Yeah. And if they can comply with our ordinance, uh, to provide, and ultimately, you know, as, uh, as some of you may be aware, there are some areas of the town where depending on who your provider is, it's kind of a dead zone. You know, you, you're driving along certain roads and all of a sudden your call ends, like every time. And, uh, to the extent that we can maybe reduce that likelihood, you know, it does benefit the community. But at the same time, um, we don't want to just allow anything anywhere because that does, it just, it's not right. So that being said, I don't know if anyone has any specific comments on that, or if you just want to think about it a little bit, maybe we can reconvene next month after we've gotten a little better thought. Or if you have any direction you'd like to point us in to maybe further the discussion of this.
Yeah, I did like, this is just, this is something I need to get my head around. Like this is a whole, this whole discussion, this is something I'm not familiar or well-versed in.
Yeah, the, the ordinance as written now says you can still only put these small things in the, in the, in the, in the overlay area. The radio and telecommunications facility district, which is basically the cold shopping center. Right? And you said a stretch along 95. So.
Right.
My, my concern here is that this doesn't really change anything. It's not going to protect us at all. We're just going to get steamrolled by the, the carriers. And we, we should consider something that's a bit more friendly and a bit more broad to some degree.
Yeah, I thought the small facilities were allowed in the right of way, but.
I'm looking.
Maybe I'm reading it wrong. Or that's something we'll clarify just to make sure.
The non-tower wireless communications facilities are only allowed in the telecommunications and radio facilities on. Is that, is that what we define? Is the non-tower WCFs is the small ones?
I don't remember.
Okay, sorry. Small wireless communication facility. That's a different one. Let me see where that's permitted. Do we need to take action on this this week for any reason?
No. Uh, this is just, uh, starting the discussion. I mean, it's, it's a lot of information we sent out there for everyone. I didn't expect anything, uh, unless someone here is, uh, really well-versed in this. It's, it, there's a lot of things here.
Because this is governed so closely with federal regulations, would this commission want to have somebody who drafted the ordinance present at the next week to go over some of these?
Yeah, I, I, just somebody who could just help us understand what this is dressings versus what we've already done, right? And how it might, you know, at least we can get a discussion about how it might hurt us or help us or or in, in the things that.
Do you think David would suffice or would you want someone from Cohen?
David Trula?
No, Cr- Kratzler. Or would you want someone from Cohen Law Group?
From the Cohen Law.
Okay.
Be best, because this is crafted with the idea of the course of the telecommunications act and updated, uh, federal regulations. It's a very confusing area.
Yeah, I, I think that's, uh, an excellent idea that we can, uh, certainly bring them if they're available at the next planning commission meeting or a subsequent meeting.
And to have them available via Zoom so they don't have to physically be there.
I think they're from Pittsburgh, so there would definitely be.
Oh, are they? I, I didn't know that.
I believe there are, I believe there are roads between here and Pittsburgh, but yeah, we don't want to pay him to drive here.
Yeah, it's a long road.
Yeah, I mean, I see, it's probably useful because I see in here where we say you're allowed to build non-tower wireless communications facilities, which are defined in the definition section. But there is nothing here that defines to, that I see where you're permitted to build a small wireless communications facility, which is also separately defined. Right? So we set forth where you're allowed to build one of them, but we don't set forth where you're allowed to build a small wireless communications facility.
Because I don't think we, uh, at the time that was drafted, there's more. Was, the small was ever an issue. It was all the, always the towers.
Yeah.
You mean our existing?
You mean our existing ordinance?
I, I'm looking at this, this amended one though.
The amended, okay.
Which defines small wireless communications facility, but then does not go on to say anything about where you can build them. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
There was, there was other, um, attachments that might've been, the permitted uses might've been in a separate one. I'm not sure of them.
It, it, it may be, but the amended wireless ordinance says where you're allowed to build this kind of facility and this kind of facility. It includes a definition of a small wireless communications facility, but then doesn't say anything about where you're allowed to put them. It just says that it, it's just the definition. It's only in the definition section. It should comply with the design manual. Yeah. I, I'll read this more and yeah, if we could get someone who worked on this, the next meeting, that'd be great.
Just wanted to introduce the topic and introduce the thought of does anyone have the idea that maybe expanding out of that limited district makes sense in some fashion?
Certainly favorable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only defense that we have when it comes to carriers citing the telecommunications act is, well, we actually gave you other possible routes to solve your problem. Right? And then I think that's what we want to achieve. Motion to.
Jim, you would, you had mentioned and on, along the I-95 and I know by the Hampton Inn. Um, but are there, and by the, the rest stop. But are there other areas along I-95 that are also designated in the overlay area right now?
Hold on one minute, I'll.
I'm just thinking sort of like, uh, down by the, the joint bridge toll authority that they put in a new building down there. Is there like anything along that area?
I don't believe so, but let me just pull up the map real quickly and take a look.
Well, while he's looking at that, Tony, I do know that Verizon's argument, we had told them instead of building at the synagogue, you could go build in the approved zone over by Coles, said the only space to build there is either on that private property, which is a preserved farm or has a, uh, the, the, the small farm there kind of nestled into five mile woods. Or on the water tower, you're permitted to put masts and antennas in the water tower, but that is apparently full and has no further capacity.
There really is no, there's no space there.
According to Verizon, there is no space.
Yeah, I have up on the TV screen, uh, the map. The telecommunications overlay is in the area along the north side of I-95. Uh, between the development that is an upper hilltop road and Taylorsville Road. So basically across the street from the Delaware Joint Toll Bridge Commission. The next area is that limited area behind the Hampton Inn where there's an existing tower. There's also an existing tower here behind the radio towers that are up on the hill on Woodside Road.
That's grandfathered in.
The radio towers, the radio towers are grandfathered in. Um, the next area that it is allowed is actually kind of a large area. It's almost the entirety or most of the C3 zoning district. The west side of Old Oxford Valley Road, the west side of Oxford Valley Road. And then it cuts in behind the Makefield quarters and Makefield, uh, executive quarters. So that limited area here, there is a tower uh, down here off of Old Oxford Valley Road, 135 Old Oxford Valley Road, existing. There are no other locations within the township under our current ordinance where we permit that zoning.
Great. So let me make sure that, that means that someone's allowed to build a tower there today?
They could build a tower today up off of Dobree Road, uh, Old Oxford Valley Road.
Right, right. Right in the middle of.
It was the Matrix Development, right, right, right in there.
Well, I don't think they'd be allowed to put it inside of there because of the, uh, settlement agreement and all that stuff. Um.
The, the one that you said that's off of Old Oxford Valley Road, that's sort of like behind the Shell Station.
Correct. Yeah, it's uh, it backs up to the regency of Yardley South. So there's a, sort of sits up there. And uh. In adjoining municipalities, there is the tower in Yardley Borough. Uh. That Yardleyville Shopping Center, you know, the pink buildings on Afton Avenue. There's another tower.
My, my cellphone certainly can't tell that there's a tower in Yardley Borough.
Uh, it's not a very tall tower. Uh, there's another tower in Falls Township. On Stony Hill Road, right near where the interchange with Route one is. Right there, there's another tower. Uh, at Marazo's. Uh, formerly Marazo's Garden Center. Down along West Trenton Avenue. There's a tower there. And then the other towers are somewhere. Off of Yardley Langhorn Road in Middletown. Think over by the school somewhere. And then up in. Upper Makefield, there's one on the Gunser Farm. Which is on Highland Road. And. Stufel. I've been dealing with this for.
Mo- motion to be impressed by Jim Majewski.
So uh, you know, everyone could just sleep on a little bit and just think about. You know, uh, is the idea of possibly allowing it on top of non-residential buildings? And at what height to Tony's point, because fifty feet on top of uh. The giant supermarket might look a little bit. Crazy. Uh, but then again, maybe some other dimension might work.
How, how much like? How much are we even talking about? A lot of these things on top of poles, on top of buildings.
That's, this is the way the technology is moving. So um Barbara referred to it as a DAS or distributed antenna system. The idea is much like in airports. Ten fifteen years ago, your phone didn't work in an airport. Now there's little antennas all over the airport that pretend to be your cellphone carrier. They take your signal and they run it back to the nearest actual point where the cellphone carrier has their network, right? So it's, it, it's much like the Google mesh in your home, right? Your wifi mesh. So the idea is. Really big uh towers with really big antennas using really big power are inefficient, right? Because you get a super strong signal right next to the tower. And then you get nothing as you go further away. So yes, you are moving towards an idea where. You know, I don't want to say every utility pole, but yeah, perhaps that, that's a contemplated. Future where on the utility poles, you're having distribution points for cellular service. As opposed to giant towers.
So like, how big are we talking?
They're, they're quite small. Well. I say that, I mean, the, the five G antenna itself is. It's hard to tell. I haven't seen one up close in a while. They're usually a little bit higher, so you lose perspective, but. You know, maybe the size of a loaf of bread. Right? Maybe, maybe twice the length of a loaf of bread. They're not huge. Yeah, about, about the length of a laptop, they're relatively thick. No, if it was on a telephone pole, you wouldn't notice it would be a black rectangle sitting up there. Yeah, like two shoeboxes stuck together, right? Up in, up, up at the top of the pole. But I think, I think the, the concern that Barbara raised is a very good one. If they don't have existing poles to put them on, they will stick a small little gray mast right there. And hang a couple of these things off the top of it. And I think that's what we want to try to avoid with this ordinance is the, the telephone company. Because Verizon in the eighties and nineties ran fiber everywhere. They've got fiber. At every curb in this township and anywhere they want to. They probably could in your front yard, go stick a little gray pole. With some shoeboxes hanging off it. So I think that's the goal to get to is hopefully to create something where. Verizon doesn't do that and come and ruin your nice yard and stick a little pole in the front of it.
And I believe the ordinance, once I clarify where it says it's exactly that, one of the things that uh. Is that it won't be allowed in areas that. Have everything underground.
Right.
So you can't just stick it up in the middle of a. A nineteen nineties development that is absent polls.
And at least for the short term, that should satisfy theoretically the carrier because your, your phone's going to pick up whichever signal is strongest. So moving signals to those small distributed systems will reduce the burden on the tower. So that, that existing tower will have better throughput and better capabilities for the people that are still on it. At least for your four G customers.
Yeah, and Verizon still does say that they need more towers. Even with the new technology coming up. As Colin said, so uh, but the limitation with the tower is it has limitations based on. The height of the tower, the surrounding topography, the vegetation, buildings that are in the way. Um, so.
Okay, is there anything else on this? I don't think we need to move or anything. This is sort of, now I got, this is the beginning of a discussion, right? Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? Good? Anything else anyone wants to uh? Discuss?
Happy Hanukkah to all the people who follow the planning commission.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion re-adjourn.
Don't move, we're adjourned. Last time I get to use that.